All right, here we go, 7 o'clock. All right, so this is the planning board meeting of April 14th, 2020. And it's 7 o'clock right now. So we'll do a roll call vote. This is a new thing to the planning board, to me and to our members. So let's see, let's start with Wilson, clear?
I'm here.
Jen Bogart?
Here.
Bruce Mackey is here. Jim Hoffman?
Yeah.
And Kevin Robinson?
Yeah.
All right. So I have a statement to read before we start with the meeting tonight from KMP Law. I think, oh, Jim sent it to me. It said pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law 30A subsection 20, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Cava Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote precipitation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Cava website at www.cava.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so in the following manner. Area 58 livestream, www.Area58.tv. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of Cava website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And that was from Jim Walsh, Planning Director, who's with us here tonight. So I guess we'll continue when we do have a public hearing. It was on the application. Let me see. Okay, on the application of RP, RBP, B LLC of Kingston requesting a site plan review pursuant to sections 2230 and 3100 of the Cava zoning bylaw for a property locator off of Spring Street on assessors map 32. And so we, I think, Jim, you've been in communications with the property owner, the applicant? And this is to be continued to next meeting of April 28?
That's correct. So I spoke with the applicant engineer, McKenzie, Brad McKenzie, and told him that right now we're going through kind of a surge with the coronavirus and said, you know, would you mind postponing until the, or continuing to the April 28th meeting? And so they agreed to that. And there's an email in your packet where they're requesting the continuance.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion for this to be continued?
Mr. Chairman, Will Sinclair make a motion to continue the public hearing for, on behalf of RBP, B LLC of Kingston, to the April 28th meeting at 7:00 PM?
I'll second that. Aye, Kevin Robinson, I'll second that.
Okay, so you had a motion by Will, second by Kevin. Any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll do a roll call vote then. Wilson, clear?
Aye.
Jen Bogart?
Aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye. Jim Hoffman?
Aye.
And Kevin Robinson?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to, next is a discussion. Jack Williams is with us. This is Gilbert Estates. It's lot release, and this is for a discussion, possible vote this evening.
Do we still have Jack?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Do you want to give a little prelim to this, Jack?
Yeah, if you could, yeah, if you could speak about this, Jim, and then we'll let Jack talk.
Okay. So at the February 25th meeting, Jack was before us and was requesting a lot release. And so the board went ahead and made a vote to release lots 1 through 6, 9 and 10, and withhold lots 7 and 8, and then upon approval from Fussin' O'Neil. So I got an estimate from Fussin' O'Neil. Usually what they do, Fussin' O'Neil comes in at the very end before the final lots are, you know, the final building permits are given, or the, you know, the final occupancy permit, and they do a final inspection of the subdivision. And so the, you know, the cost was kind of expensive. Jack was concerned about that. So I talked to Bruce, and we had John Woods, our DPW director, and Jesse Boyle, our fire, you know, our deputy fire chief, come out and do an inspection on the site. And in your packet, you'll see letters from both of them stating that, you know, they have seen no problems with the roadway that's been put in, roadway and infrastructure.
Also, Renro was there.
Just got a question for you. Through you, Mr. Chair, Jim, or to, um, on the response from the fire department saying that the sign was damaged, and also whether or not the water system had been tested by small water systems? Do we have any updates on that? Maybe, Jack, you can talk to that?
The sign was damaged. It was run over a couple of weeks ago. I have not installed it, reinstalled it. I will be doing that. And as far as the water system, it has not been tested.
Okay.
It is in, it is planned on being tested, but it has not been tested yet.
Do you have an estimated time of that, of both of those items happening?
Well, I'll have the sign put up probably next week, and the water tested probably within 30 days. Or the water actually pressured it.
Thank you, Jack.
Yes.
All right, does anybody else have anything else to say?
Well, I guess my thoughts would be that, you know, I have the utmost respect for the fire department and the DPW, but Fussin' O'Neil have some expertise that we rely on in town. And I would hope that their report would come back and say, that's great, no problems, just move forward for it. But in my opinion, it's important that we, as a board, use every resources we have. So since this was part of things, I would still like to see the Fussin' O'Neil report waited for.
Well, generally, is this road will eventually become a public road, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So in the end, in order for the, for the road to be accepted by the town, to become a public road, there'll have to be an as-built done of the roadway, of the drainage system, and that will all have to be accepted, and that'll have to go to our engineers, and that will have to be approved by the engineering staff that we have. So in the end, it is, it is all looked at, and the plans, you know, to make sure that it's built to specification.
Okay.
So.
So actually, what are we voting on tonight, then, to release?
Just to release, how many lots are we going to release now?
Eight of the 10.
And so that leaves two lots?
That is correct.
Okay, then we went over the cost of this, too. There was an estimate of what it would cost for completion?
Yes, there was. I submitted that at the February meeting.
Okay. Yeah, do we have that number again, just to refresh everybody's memory?
Give me one second. I thought I had it right here.
Just based on the minutes from the 25th, February 25th, it says $106,500 left to work to be completed. And then, I think, the value of the lots, I think, was valued at $300,000 approximately. We'll hold in two, correct? And we'll hold two of those lots. And I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, I thought we voted to do this? We voted to do it, but based on Fussin' O'Neil inspecting? Right, so the condition was, is that Fussin' O'Neil went out there and inspected? And he got was a, and maybe it was because of what's going on with this virus and everything, that they're really not working? And I'm just guessing on that. The memo from the DPW director of operations says that everything seems fine to him. And I know he does a lot of roadways and everything, but the condition that we did on our vote was upon Fussin' O'Neil's review. So either we have to change the vote, in my opinion, or we need Fussin' O'Neil to do that. I don't think there's, in my opinion, there's no intent not to move this thing forward. It's just that that was a condition of the vote. And I could be wrong, but just for clarification, I'm trying to think up in the minutes.
No, I see things the same way, Will, and the minutes reflect that.
So, um, so how much, did you ever find out how much was in the account, Jim, for, you know, engineering and inspections?
I did not. We don't, we're going on a short staff, and I seem to remember in the days that they're not in the office.
Sure.
My apologies for that.
Yeah, so.
I guess I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
With what Will had said, where we voted on February 25th to release lots 1 through 6, 9 and 10, upon approval from Fussin' O'Neil. So how can we kind of unapprove that and then have a new motion? Can we avoid that vote at all, or how do we officially do that?
Well, we would have to go back, just for clarification, we would have to go back. If the board wanted to go back and change our vote, rescind our vote to release those lots, and then take another vote to do so upon the letter that we received from Johnny Woods, the director of operations, DPW superintendent. I don't know if that's the intent of the, of what we're trying to get accomplished. It says here that W has been there quite a few times down to the lot, and I'm sure he has, because that's just John Woods' way, but for us, for us to move forward, there's a little discrepancy because of the vote was, was upon the released lot, upon all the lots but 7 and 8, once Fussin' O'Neil takes a look. So I don't know whether or not Fussin' O'Neil's working or not. Jim Walsh, maybe you can explain? They are working, yes. Yeah? Yeah. Was it that they just couldn't get to the site? So I got a cost proposal, I did present it to Jack, and he didn't want to, you know, spend the money to do that.
I thought it was, I thought they were trying to gouge, just to be honest with you.
So, Jack, what was the estimate?
Their estimate was almost $1,800.
To come to the site, to a site, doesn't it?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, correct me if I'm wrong. Jack is coming forward, asking for us to release these lots based on this being, this cost being some type of a hardship. So I don't understand why we can't go ahead with John Woods and Jesse Boils and still keep the condition open in the sense that the lots that are getting released, Fussin' O'Neil are going to see this before the completion.
Well, I agree, I agree with you, Kevin, there. I think, the only thing that I'm asking is if the board would like to rescind our previous vote and take a different vote, saying that, you know, John Woods' letter, noting John Woods' letter to release those lots, then Jack can move forward. Obviously, Fussin' O'Neil would have to do a final inspection on the, on everything anyways. Whatever those costs, or the cost, or whatever repairs that doesn't meet Fussin' O'Neil's purview, Jack would have to repair anyways.
So are you making a motion, then, Will, to go back and change that?
At this time, through you, Mr. Chair, I would leave this in your ballpark. It should be a discussion that the board should take place, whether or not they want to rescind our previous motion. And if we do that, I'll make that motion at that time, but I'd like to hear, you know, from all the board members whether or not they're comfortable doing that.
All right, yeah, I guess that's something that's, we're going to, we're going to have to discuss. In the end, the subdivision will have to have an as-built done, and Fussin' O'Neil will look at that as-built, and any corrections will, that aren't done according to plan, will have to be done in order for the road to be accepted by the town. So, so Fussin' O'Neil will, in the end, look at this. So I guess it's up to the board members to decide. Yeah, well, I guess we did discuss that, that Fussin' O'Neil would take a look at this, but our John Woods did look at this, and the fire department did look at this, and it's just a small subdivision. So whether everyone is comfortable with rescinding our vote to release the lots without Fussin' O'Neil looking at this, but just going at what our, our John Woods and the fire department has said. So to me, to me, it seems fine. But I don't, I don't know how anybody else feels about this. But if we could take a vote, rescind that vote, and then just vote on, on letting these lots be released because Jim Woods and the fire department have approved. So how does everybody else feel about that? I think Will said that he was okay with that?
Yeah, I'll start, Mr. Chair. I'm okay rescinding the vote. I just want to be clear with Jack Williams that if, if down the road that Fussin' O'Neil, our professionals find something rock, wrong, I want to get you on record saying that you'd, you'd do whatever it takes to get that repaired up to the standards of what it's supposed to be.
Yes, I would. Yes.
So then I'm good with it.
I guess I would say that, no, I'm not comfortable, because if we thought it was important enough to do when we did our original vote, and the reason for asking for a new vote now is simply financial, I don't know how much Fussin' O'Neil has charged in the past. So, Mr. Williams, if you're saying that we're being gouged, I don't have any information to know if that's true. You know, if there was a coronavirus thing, and that was, you know, if they weren't working, I could see there, but without having numbers, I, I'm not comfortable rescinding and changing my vote.
Well, you know, I did ask Jim if there was any more money in the account, and we don't know, unfortunately, because of the coronavirus, and nobody's been able to get to those records, so.
No, I mean, like, how much does Fussin' O'Neil normally charge? I have no idea if $1,700 is way over the usual stuff, so.
Yeah, yeah, generally, we just make sure that there's money in the, in the inspection account. And right now, because of the pandemic, we don't really know. They just haven't had time to, they just don't have the people there at Town Hall to look at this, so.
Mr. Chair, and just as a point of interest, the final inspection, I talked to Fussin' O'Neil, it'll be roughly the same amount of money as they would have charged for this interim inspection.
So when they, when they look at this as an interim inspection, they just walk through this and visually look at the subdivision. They don't bring survey instruments out there to do any checking. So it wouldn't be anything more than John Woods and the fire department did when they walked through. I believe that's the way it goes.
Right, they did ask for a copy of, you know, the plans for the site. I'm not sure if they, if they bring instruments or not. I can't, can't attest to that.
Yeah, I, I don't think that happens until the as-built comes along, and that's done by the applicant, by the applicant's engineers and surveyors come up, and they actually do a survey of the property, and then draw up plans, and as-built showing the, the conditions that are on the field. And then those conditions that exist now are compared with the, the plans that it was supposed to be built to. So that's, that's what the as-builds are for.
So, Mr. Chair, could I ask one more question to Jack? Is it possible that the price that he's being given includes their walk-through and then their final inspection or final professional opinion after they brought their equipment out to sign off on it for the occupancy?
I don't know that.
Well, that may be something, that may be something you might want to look into, because maybe that price wasn't just to walk the property. Maybe that price is their price, and it includes them having to make that site walk, and then of course, what they need to do in order to professionally walk through it and sign off on it for you.
But, Mr. Chair?
I've not had any discussion, I'm sorry, Jim, I have not had any discussion with Fussin' O'Neil. They would not generally come out with instruments. That's up to my people to provide the certification, whether it be, you know, for the as-built and everything else. They would, I would envision, I mean, I've done this with other engineers from the town, Bob Catley and, and people like that, and they basically come out, make their comments, and they're much less money than that, but that was years ago, so. That's, that's kind of why I'm questioning it. And then also, if you're saying that their final bill would be $1,700, then I would think they'd be doing a lot more work on the final rather than just the interim one, you know?
I'd have to agree with that. Right, so they, Fussin' O'Neil told me that was the price to come out, take a look at the subdivision, using whatever available plans we had, and then they would write up a report and submit it to the planning board. And that was, in its pre-equivalent scope, that they would perform for the final inspection, but with the final inspection, they would have the benefit of having the as-built plans.
So, Jim, if I may, does that include the price for the, it sounds like two services? Or is it going to, is he going to have an additional cost at the end?
So that would be, so each one are separate services. So one would be come out, do an inspection now, write up a report, and submit it, and then, you know, it'll be, both, both visits would be for the same price, because they're, you know, they're paying their staff to come out, plus their overhead, travel time, et cetera, to come out, plus they're in the office time to put a report together.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask one more time. So specifically, are they charging $1,700 for walking through, and $1,700 on top of that for finishing, or are they charging $1,700 to do both?
No, the $1,700 is the first inspection, you know, so if they had gone out recently and done that inspection, then that'd be $1,700 for that inspection. And then, when we're down to the final, you know, doing the final as-built plans, that'd be a completely separate inspection, but it would be for roughly the same amount of money, they told me.
Okay, thank you. So it's safe to say that it's $3,400?
Well, it would have been, it's $1,700 for that one inspection, but if they did both, it would be $3,400, give or take.
Okay, so, so that's what I would ask, if it would be incorporated, and it isn't.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Jim, do you have anything to say? Any questions?
For a point of reference, normally on a project like this, is this?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
You can, you're kind of going in and out, but go ahead, give it a try.
Jim, is there any way to turn off that background? I've found in all the Zoom meetings I've been on lately, if you have that background, it messes up the audio. If not, shut your audio off, and then talk, and we'll be able to hear you.
Shut my audio off.
Yeah. If you go up to your, your video, and there's three dots in the upper right-hand corner, or actually, sorry, down at the bottom, it says stop video. If you look down at the bottom of your screen. There you go, not try talking, but you have to unmute yourself.
How about now?
Perfect.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. So my question is a point of reference on a project similar to this. This step that we're asking Fussin' O'Neil to do, do they normally do this?
No, you're fading out again, Jim.
On, can you hear me now?
It's in and out.
All right, on projects similar to this, do we ask Fussin' O'Neil to do this, any reviews, or is this an extra one on top of what we know?
I think I heard what he said. I think he said, projects of this similar scope, do we normally ask Fussin' O'Neil to do this inspection at this point? Or was this just a, a one-off, that it was going to be done? Correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but that's what I took away from what I heard.
Exactly what I was asking.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Will.
Normally, in every single subdivision that we've been through, we've had Fussin' O'Neil, if not in the room with us as we work, walk through, or they've done site inspections. They've always done it. This is the only one that we have not had them do a site inspection when asked to do so. I understand from the applicant that there's a cost factor involved with that, but it is the determination of this board whether or not it requires its professional engineer to do that or not. As far as the, as far as the costs go, there's an R&amp;I account for every subdivision. If the R&amp;I account falls negative, it's up to the applicant to fill that back up prior to. Prior to the approval, uh, the final approval of the subdivision. So those costs are always, are always ongoing and occurred. Jack, I don't want to speak for you, but I know you've done quite a few subdivisions in the town. And you know that that's the normal practices. As far as uh better definition of what Fussin' O'Neil was going to look at when they went out to the site. Um, I guess that would have been a question that we should have asked them at that time when they came back with their estimate of uh. What it would have cost them to go out. Um, just for point of clarification, Jim, did you ask Fussin' O'Neil for a uh cost of scope? Or was that a request from the applicant? No, I asked him for, for a scope. Okay. And in the scope, in that scope, did he give you a scope of what he was going to do for the services? Other than just come out and visualize the site and write a report for the board? They did provide a scope. Okay. And I just, um, I just don't recall, call what was in it. Well, I know that, I know we're working remote and this is trying times and I'm, and I'm sure the applicant understands that also. The only thing, only thing that I can say is that um, in my opinion, um, the vote that we took required Fussin' O'Neil to do that. If the board deems that they would like to change, rescind that vote and do that, that it, we, that it's within our purview. Um, to do that and do another vote, or we can just have Fussin' O'Neil go out and do their inspection. And um move forward at that time. That's just for clarification, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, uh. Yeah, historically, we've, I guess, when, when it comes to this point for lot release, we do have the uh town, no, we have the engineers. Uh, Fussin' O'Neil go out to, to do that. So this is uh a request that's different, something, something a little bit uh than we normally uh do. Um, I, I guess, I guess the only thing we can do, it seems to be at a stalemate right now. So um, I, maybe we should just take a vote and see if, well, let me see. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to uh rescind. Our previous order of having Fussin' O'Neil inspect this subdivision for the release of lots. See how that flies.
Well, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair. Let me be clear on that motion. I'm going to make a motion to rescind our previous uh vote on releasing the lots and that was in. Uh, not that one. It was on. February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty. Rescind the motion that was made by myself to um release lots one through six, nine and ten at Gilbert Estates. And withhold the lots seven and eight upon approval from Fussin' O'Neil. That is to rescind that vote. That's my motion.
So we have a motion to uh, does anybody want to come up with a second? No. Hearing, hearing no second. Is anybody out there that uh want to second this motion? Well, hearing none, I guess that isn't going to work then.
Okay, um, then I'll move forward to uh have Fussin' O'Neil go out there and do it. And um, thank you very much.
Okay, Jack.
Who you, Mr. Chair, who you, Mr. Chair, I want to ask Jack, are you under any type of time restraints? Because if you are, I'd, I'd want to um try to expedite that inspection for you. So that way it's done prior to our next meeting.
I would like to uh try and get that done prior to next meeting, yes.
Okay, so, so Jim, uh, Jim Walsh, can we make sure that we get Fussin' O'Neil out there to do their inspection? And to have the results prior to our next meeting on the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
And can I add something? Can we please um make it a priority to find out what and how much money is in the fund?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. So um. We'll continue this uh to our next meeting. I don't know if we need a vote for that because this isn't a public hearing, but uh. Do we need a vote for this, Jim? For continuation?
No, I don't think we do.
Okay.
We don't.
All right, so, so I guess we'll see Jack at a, a next meeting.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Safe everyone. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, moving on, uh, we have another discussion tonight about the municipal relief legislation. And I guess that's something that Jim might want to speak about.
Yeah, so in the packets, there's some information that um. KP Law put together um on behalf of their client communities. The state, the legislature recently uh adopted some changes uh due to the public health emergency. To uh provide some relief to towns for some of the permitting deadlines. And so um. Basically, what it does is just kind of outlines, you know. So what those are. And, you know, just to give the town some uh, well, usually, you know, when someone files, we're sort of beholden to their schedule that's laid out in the statute. And so this relieves some of the deadlines and so on. So the, for example, um, one of the keys is that uh, you know. It essentially allows boards to uh. You know, not even hold public hearings until within forty-five days uh after the end of the public, um, the public health emergency. But uh. You know, these changes in the uh deadlines, you know, the recording of registered deeds, et cetera, that gives everyone some relief. So for example, we have four A and R plans that have come in. And normally, the board will have twenty-one days to act on it once it's received by the board. Uh, so those deadlines are released uh from the town. So that gives the, gives the planning board more flexibility to uh review the plans and then uh get back to the applicant. But the intent is if the board can go ahead and meet and, and, and take action on, on uh these. In our plans or uh special permits or uh site plan reviews, then, you know, they're encouraging, you know, the, the towns to do so. And then the other aspect of that is allowing um changes to allow boards to um. Remote access uh the planning board meeting, such as we're doing tonight. You know, the other thing we have to kind of work on for next uh, next meeting, because we have two public hearings. Is that we have to establish um a means for the public to be able to participate in the meeting. So uh on uh Area, you know, fifty-eight, there'll be live streaming uh, you know, the hearing. But we also have to have some way, such as uh members of the public being able to uh type in or call in, you know, questions. Um, of the applicants uh so that uh, you know, they're, they're, they can participate, they can ask questions. And uh get information back on, you know, during the public hearing process. And so that would be one of the things we're trying to work on over the next couple of weeks. So that we can have a public hearing that meets all the conditions uh that the state is imposing. So Jim, just, just so if I can interrupt you for one minute. I know me and you discussed this and I wanted to discuss it with the board. And I know that the members of the public are going to hear this. Last week, I attended a um, a similar meeting like this Zoom through the Building Association out in California. With the International Association of Electrical Inspectors, discussing the proper procedures of uh virtual inspections. There was more than three hundred participants in that meeting. All the, all the public, meaning myself being one of the participants, any of our questions, questions went through a chat feature that's in Zoom. And that, that feature was overseen by one of the um, one of the members of the board that was holding the public hearing. And that every one of those chat features will be able to be addressed. So if you had a question, you'd chat it there and then that would be brought up at the meeting. I know I talked to Jim about this because I thought it was neat how we was able to hold the meeting so large. And it was not only around uh this, but it was, you know, all the way out into uh Hawaii attended. And uh Puerto Rico attended. So it was, it was pretty large uh thing. But those were the type of features that I thought was interesting. Where we'd be able to hold a meeting, we'd still be able to get comment from the public. The only issue would be is that if there was a large amount of comments. It would have to have a little bit of timeframe so that way we could be able to respond to the public. Which might delay process in the open meeting, so that way we would be able to respond to each one of their concerns. Thanks.
Thank you, Will.
The, if I can just add something to that, um, with all the meetings that I've been on. Uh, there's also a raise hand feature. Did they use that at all, Will?
They did. That was cool too.
Yeah, so that the moderator of the meeting can see when people have a question and you can just tick down the list. Um, some people find that easier to review than the chat window.
Right.
I see the clapping hand. Or there's a thumbs up.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I haven't found the uh.
If you click on the, the um button down the bottom says participants. Down the bottom where it says participants and right now it says number eight there.
You got it going on, kid.
Yeah, then you can just click raise hand. So if I raise my hand, you'll see a little blue hand go next to me. And if I say, oh, I didn't mean to do that, I can just lower my hand and it goes away.
So. Is everyone seeing that raised hand?
Mm-hmm.
No, I don't see a raised hand.
Yeah, I'm not either.
Click on, do you click on participants?
I did. So I got invite, mute me, and lower hand.
Okay, you have your hand raised, Jim, right now. If you look up next to your name, there's a blue hand. So you've raised your hand.
I don't see it on the screen.
If you look, can you see my name?
Yes.
So look at my name to the right of that. I'm going to click raise hand. Do you see the little blue hand go up?
No.
No, you're just highlighted in yellow.
Who's the person that sees it?
I see her blue hand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe the moderator sees it in yellow. Are, are you and Bruce both the moderator, Jim?
I think myself and Area Fifty-Eight are the moder, uh co-hosts, I guess.
Okay.
So click on that, click on it again. Or raise hand.
Yep, you raise.
Okay, so I see it on the, in the uh participant chart on the right, I see it.
Yeah.
All right, I thought it was going to show up on the screen.
Oh, no, no, no.
See, by my screwing up, everyone got to learn something.
The thing with this is it helps.
You're only highlighted for me, Jim.
It just helps more control. Um, if everybody's typing in the chat, sometimes you miss stuff that's in the chat.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Okay, let's put all that.
Learn something new every day.
Yeah.
So what are we saying by reviewing this technology? That uh at our next meeting, which will be uh April twenty-eighth. We're saying that um we could do this in the same manner and uh still have audience. Participation just uh through either telephones or through computer. Instead of having to be a Town Hall?
Yeah. Yeah, and we have to because we can't have members of the public or applicants present at Town Hall.
Oh, okay.
So they would have to remote in anyway. So they have to kind of coordinate. So it sounds like the expert I have to talk to is Susan and uh. Well, it'd be interesting, mine is how we're going to notify the, the public at lodge? How, how are we going to, uh, maybe it's through Area Fifty-Eight and also um the public, the public hearing notices? Is that how we're going to notify the public? This is how it would come into the site?
Yep.
So they would have to get an invite from Area Fifty-Eight, similar to what we did? Is that how it works?
They would probably get, if we published the meeting with the links. Whether or not it was, uh, they could link in or they could do uh a phone call in like uh Kevin did tonight. But we'd have to push that, know that ahead of time.
Yeah.
Prior to the meeting. Yeah, so we have to kind of, yeah, kind of work on that and then um, I think we'll have to have a follow-up notice to all the, the. One of the public hearings has been continued. The other one is a new one. But those notices, I believe, are gone out. So we might have to send out another notice. Or do something to explain that uh people can, you know, if they're interested in the public hearing, this is how they can access the public hearing. And that, and then there's also a need to have certain safeguards because um uh there were some issues with Zoom where. Uh, people who were not party to the meeting uh got access and they were um. Uh, posting nasty comments or pornography during these meetings and uh, so we, we, we have to take measures to prevent that from happening. So beside our resident, resident expert Susan, I also consult with Area Fifty-Eight to see how we do that.
Yeah, there's actually a function that you can do that you can't, you won't let anybody in until you actually approve them to come in.
Right. Mm-hmm, okay.
All right. I mean, that, that sounds really good. Uh, yeah, because normally we don't give out notices to meetings. It's uh not to continued meetings. It's just um, you know, I mean, as far as uh sending out mail to a butters. It's just uh for the initial meeting and then anything that's continued, uh, we don't, you know, that. The applicant doesn't have to continue uh sending out notices. So, yeah, so I don't know what's legal.
Yeah, so we'll.
How we can do this legally.
I'm going to have to double-check our website to just verify whatever notices are on there regarding public access. And so I might have to do something specifically on the planning board website. And then also, you know, we, we may just have to send out notices again to um. You know, to the butters list, but it won't be a legal notice. It'd just be a, you receive a legal notice, but this is to let you know if you want to. Uh, comment during this meeting. It's remote access and uh here's procedure to um. Participate in the meeting.
Okay.
It sounds good. Maybe we can get a little bit of guidance from K and P on that, where it is a public hearing. We want to make sure that we're not going to hold the applicant or the town liable for. Not being a proper notification.
Mm-hmm.
Having fun yet?
All right.
Well, I think this is exactly why the state said we really don't have to do anything until forty-five days after the public emergency is done. In case there are. Yep, yep, here they go.
Hi, Madison.
Come here, we got a, we got a small one here too. For the members of the public.
Hi.
Hi, Lexi. Hi, Madison.
Hi.
All right. All right, so uh, and is there anything more uh that you want to talk about, Jim?
Well, just um, just had some notes regarding, you know, planning board packet distribution. Um, what I could do, I can do it pretty much similar to what I did this time is I can send it out electronically. And then also send it out, you know, drop-off mail copies. You know, we have five members, so that's not a, not a big problem.
Are you going to collect these afterwards?
Excuse me?
You, are the, are you going to collect these af, these packets afterwards or?
No, you're going to be, you're going to be forced to read them for the next two weeks of seclusion.
Or if he's been contaminated.
Wash your hands after he gives them to you.
That's right.
Oh, that's funny. I burned mine so that I wouldn't get sick from them.
Wonder why that stove is so hot? And then the other question too comes, um, with kind of signatures. Uh, if we're meeting virtually, uh, for example, in our plans, no one's going to be around the table to sign all the plans. And then the same thing with decisions. Uh, does the board have any opinions on that?
Is it, I, I have a question. Um, is there a cost to having like a particular stamp of our signatures made? Because we've, um, also, I know that some of us have also given you, Jim, and Jill permission to sign off for us. If, if we, you know, have this conversation, whether by phone or through, uh, Zoom.
Okay. Cause, um, yeah.
Cause I don't know how it works. Do you sign something that looks like our signature? Or do you have like a signature that we've signed so that you can use it? Uh, so basically I'm asking you to use it like a stamp.
Yeah, I think, um, I'll have to double check with Jill because I know for in our plans, there is kind of a bit of a procedure where. You can have one signature, uh, for the plan. But the board has to take a vote and they have to sign that vote and then send it to the registry of deeds. So, uh, and then, uh, the land court. So they have a record, uh, that one person's allowed to vote. Uh, or I'm sorry, the board votes on it, but one person is allowed to sign the plans. So I have to double check just to look at.
Well, especially given the fact that, uh, let's face it, six of us can't come in. I mean, five of us could come in there, but if we're signing it with you, we can't because we're, uh, too many people.
Is, is there, is there a way that we could make a motion to, to have Jim sign by anything that we approved? And the next time you deliver the package, we could sign that.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was trying to get at, Jim Hoffman. Thank you.
So I thought, I thought we've done that once in the past that we, we approved someone to sign for us. But maybe if we just say, because of the, you know, COVID-19 situation. That until we get back to meet in person, we give Jim Walsh the authority to sign anything we approve. Is, I don't know if that's a legal document or not, if that's something we can look into. And then when you just, you know, distribute the next packer, we could each sign it because we're going to see you. They're one-on-one and it won't be a, uh, group of us there.
So.
So we could basically say instead of power of attorney, we give him the power of the planning board to sign for us. During this period of time that we can't meet as a group, right?
Right. I just don't know if that's legal, if that we can check with that.
So let me, um, let me, let me throw my four cents worth in on this. There is a way out of this. Um, and I know that we use it in the town of Falmouth, so that's why I can bring this up. Each, each one of the permits that we sign that a person receives has my, um, legal signature on it. And it's a stamp and the stamp was made, we all have to sign a piece of paper. You have a stamp made with Jim Hoffman, Will St. Clair, Bruce Mackey, and so on. We could do.
That's what I asked about, um, Will.
Yeah.
I asked if there was going to be a cost to us, you know, uh, for the town to have to do that where they wouldn't want to do that. But that definitely sounds like what, what should be done in this time, uh, at this time during this pandemic.
Yep. And I agree, and I agree with you. There is a cost to it and it can't be that exorbitant, you know? But I would prefer to have stamps made other than designating a person to sign for me. If we were going to have a designate, I would prefer it to be an elected member of the board. Not a, no disrespect, Jim, not a staff person.
And that's why I brought up power of the planning board.
Right. So, so my opinion, we could do it either way like that. I, I'll always make myself, for as long as I'm still on this board, I'll always make myself available for a signature. One way or another, there's ways to do it. I had a meeting last night with one of my IDA members to sign a check. And there's proper way to do it.
I guess, Jim, oh, I'm sorry, Will.
And we weren't hugging either.
You have a mask on?
I had, we both had masks, we both had gloves and we were more than 20 feet apart.
Awesome. So, so to get back to the point, is it fair to say that we can have Jim look into the cost of the stamp? Or do we want to designate somebody, power of the planning board to sign in these ti, at this time? Only because of the fact that we cannot meet as a group?
Probably we, yeah. I mean, uh, I don't know if you could look into that, Jim, if one of us. I mean, I could sign, if I could sign the plan for the planning board. Um, I mean, it's just the same thing as if somebody in the office had everybody's signature stamps and, and stamped the plan. You know, I'd, I'd be willing to, uh, sign the, sign the plan for everybody in the planning board, um, under the state of emergency.
I'm okay with that.
I'm with Will. I'll make myself available at, at any cost. So.
Well, we could do that too. Um, but just in case, I suppose. Uh, how do you feel about this, Jim? I mean, uh, I mean, what do you know about it? Can one member of the planning board sign for, for everyone? Or could you sign for everyone? Or, you know, what are our options?
Yeah, I think, hold on one sec. Just want to get popcorn because Jim left. This is intuition, right? But popcorn's good.
Hey, Will, we should just have Jim leave the document in a bubble and we each go in the bubble all by ourselves and sign it.
There you go. Now here's the wording as it relates to in our plans. And it says, "The planning board of a city or town, which has authorized any person other than the majority of the board. To endorse a plan, honor plan, the approval of the board, or to make any other certificate under the subdivision control law." So transmit a written statement to the registered deeds and the recorder of the land court, signed by the majority of the board. Giving the name of the person so authorized. So, um, so it looks like you can authorize one person, but you need to, um. Provide a, uh, written statement to the register of deeds and record a land court. Showing that that one person's authorized.
So does that, that person have to be a planning board member or could it be the planner?
Um, well, there was some discussing, just discussion on the mass planners listserv. Where, uh, depending on the community, uh, so in some places the planning board meets. And they designate the staff person to sign off. In other locations, they, they designate one or, uh, let's say the chairman. And then as a backup, the, uh, vice chairman of the board to sign off. But, um, you know, it's really up to the board.
And so that's really, so I'm, I, I appreciate, uh, members stepping forward and said that they, they would like to, uh, sign the plan. But if all the members couldn't sign the plan, then just by one or two members signing the plan, that, that wouldn't work.
Right.
We would still need a designated person, uh, anyway.
Well, is, can I ask, is Jen vice chair?
Yeah, go ahead, uh, Kevin.
Is Jen vice chair?
No, secretary.
All right. Who's vice chair? Jim?
I am. Yep.
All right. That's too bad because if, if Jen had been vice chair and she was willing to come in and sign, then it would have been good. Now, or we could agree to, um, Jim as vice chair and, um, Bruce, obviously.
Right. And it doesn't have to be those people that I'm just, I was just relating, uh, what other communities have done. So say for example.
So, so Jen could, for example, since she's willing to come in or Will is willing to come in. Uh, they could sign as well as us designating, um, a power of planning board for Bruce to sign. If, if for some reason some member can't get in to do it.
Right. Or say if the board wanted to say designate Will and/or Jen to sign off. They could be the.
I think that sounds great. And thank you, Will and Jen, for, for your offering to do that. I mean, I, I have no problem offering to do that as well. Um, it's just then it becomes a matter of we have to make an appointment with you, Jim. To come in and sign it when we're coming in the building and it isn't an issue, right?
Right. So, or I can, you know, bring the, uh, get the big plan. So it's, uh. I was going to say I could bring it to your house, but it gets kind of messy because you get all the big size plans that have to be signed off on as well. So would probably best if, say if you had one person who is a member of the board designated to kind of come in and sign off. And then, so you could say, uh, one member can sign off for these members. And then, then you have another member who comes off and signs off for themselves.
Yeah. Cause my question would be, what if one of us was designated to sign for everybody? But something happens where not everybody voted for the project. So that would the one person signing kind of represent everybody? Because what if something went 4-1 and the one person signed, it would look like maybe it was 5-0? So I guess to your point, if, if everybody wanted, whoever was comfortable designating someone to sign for it, go for it. But I know personally, I get excited when I can sign things because it's fun for me. So anything I, anything I, I vote to approve, I would love to see my signature on it. So I'm, if you guys want to do it, but I know I'd like to sign my name to anything that I support.
Well, thank you for that. But, um, the thing is, is that Will is going to be only here with, he's a short timer. And it could possibly be, I don't know, Jenny, you still running, running for selectmen or?
I don't know that there's even an election anymore.
Is there going to be like, but you could also be a short timer. So I, you know, I, what, you know, what I suggest is, is that say that. I can sign the plans for everyone if everybody would like to do that.
I'm good with that.
If everybody, if, because. Cause I may be here or may not be here longer than, than, than anybody for a while anyway. And, uh, the second thing is, is that if people feel that they want to sign the plans. I mean, they, they can still come in, like if Jen still wanted to sign the plans, I don't see anything wrong. Um, if you want to still put your signature on it, even though someone else was the designated signer. For the planning board under emergency conditions such as these. So, um, so, you know, so that takes, I would say that takes care of everything. But, uh, so how does that sound with everybody?
That's okay. I just, if you, if your signature was for the five of us. But let's say only three people approve something. If you were the one to sign it for approval. That would make it look like all five people said yes. So what, how would that just be distinguished that one signature doesn't mean unanimous?
We still all sign the plans no matter what.
Okay.
Whether you, whether you approve of the, the plans or conditions. I mean, all planning board members do sign the plans. They do sign the conditions. Um, so that really, doesn't really make any difference.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, uh, votes are all on record.
Okay.
On written record and on video record. So, um. So that, you know, that's just the way it is. But when we pass the plans around and we pass the conditions around at the meetings, everybody signs those plans.
Yeah.
Whether they voted or for or against or, uh, or I, I, or so that's the way it goes, you know? So I don't know if there's something, uh, you know, something we want to vote on, um, if.
I make a motion to, uh, Mr. Chair, make a motion to authorize the planning board chairman to be the designate signature. For the board during this crisis.
I'll second that motion, Will.
So I have a motion second. Any further discussion?
Can I, can I somehow like take myself out of that? No offense, but can I, can I say like, I'll be responsible for my signature? I'll find my way to Jim somehow.
You will.
Can I say like, you guys are good, Bruce can do you guys, but I just, I just kind of want to do my own thing?
Sure. I mean, you can still sign the plans. You can still sign the plans.
Okay.
Um, if you, if you'd like to do that.
I, I believe, aren't we, we're, we're, we're just making it so that, um, Bruce can sign the plans for us if we can't get in there. But obviously Jen, you're still going to be able to independently go in there if you want. Jim might, Jim Hoffman might be out of town, you know, I, I, I might forget to come in. Will may be in Florida, you know what I mean? So Bruce is signing on behalf of us, but he's not signing for you. Which means you still have the opportunity to go in and sign for yourself on these plans. Uh, is, is that what I am, am understanding, right?
Yeah. I mean, the planning board members can still, can still, uh, sign this. And, you know, just say, I guess, what would happen if I got sick and I was off to the hospital? Um, then.
We just designate another person. I hope you don't go to the hospital. Let's not even discuss things like that.
Then the members would, would have to sign, I guess, unless we had an alternate, uh, I don't know, have, has anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I'll amend my vote to include the vice chairman.
Okay. Yeah. Maybe, yeah, should have, uh, one or the other. Yeah. That's the, the, uh, chairman of the vice chair.
That's a really good idea. That takes care of everything.
Or wasn't available, uh, the other person could do that. So how does that sound?
That's.
So we have a motion. So we have a motion, uh, that further discussion.
I second that.
Okay. So, uh, okay. So Kevin, so, uh. Okay. So Kevin second, uh, those in favor, uh, will do a roll call vote. Uh, Will?
Will, aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Bruce, aye. Jim?
Aye.
And Kevin?
Kevin, aye.
Okay. Well, thank you. All right. So I guess we went through the planning director notes as we had the discussion of the package distribution. The public hearing procedures. And I guess we went through the Zoom procedures too.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I'm all set.
Okay. So, uh, any planning board member notes? I'd, I'd just like to say that, uh, just happy to, to see everyone and I, I hope everybody and their families are well. And I know this is a, I don't know if this is going to be live tonight. Uh, but, uh, but I hope everybody in town is, is doing well under these, uh, unusual circumstances between, uh. Pandemics and severe storms. Uh, but, uh, I hope everybody continues to stay well. Anybody else?
The only thing that I had for you, Mr. Chairman, is mostly for the public. What a district commissioner's met last night, um, and conducted, and conducted business. Um, and as far as the redevelopment authority, at this time, we have no reason to meet. We don't have any business that's pressing. So we will not be meeting. And for me, uh, I'm still happy to be here, uh, representing the public, uh, on the planning board until the election happens. So, um, I guess you're still stuck with me.
Well, thank you, Will. Always great to hear your input and to, to see your face on the, uh, on the computer here in our homes. All right. We got the minutes of, uh, February 25th, 2020. To, uh, to vote to approve.
I make a motion to approve as, as presented.
Yeah. Did they, your copy, Susan, doesn't have those wonky like names on it, right? It's probably just. It's probably just the one sent out, I just want to make sure your copy isn't weird like that.
What do you mean by having draft on it or?
Yeah, but like up in attendees, there's always those like weird things that happen, I don't know if you can read it. Like James H. Jen Bogart.
Oh, oh, yeah. It seems to happen all the time.
Yeah, so as long as that's not in like the final ones, then they look great.
Let me hear Susan.
Susan muted.
Muted.
Sorry. It's, if she left the tracking on when she printed it or emailed it, that's what you're seeing.
No, this is what Jim brought me, this wasn't my fault.
No, I'm talking when the office sends it out.
Yeah, yep, cool, then they look great.
The only other comment I have is that under the, also present, it says Andy Glimes, it should be Andy Glines with the N, not an M.
Yep.
Okay, so it's G L I N as in Nancy?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right.
And I'd just like to say thank you to Susan, because without her, this wouldn't be able to take place, right?
Oh, I'm sure it would have taken place just fine, but thank you.
Well, I gotta get a thank you in there anyways.
How's my Maddie doing?
Madison?
Good, 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 oh, Madison, I have a Madeline, Jen, her granddaughter.
Okay, so yours, all right, she have mine, sorry.
You're doing good, I got to see her once and we had a beautiful time. They, she and her little sister set up a jungle slash play area on the couch and it was really beautiful with about 60 different animals. So the girls are cute, I bet it's the same thing that goes on at Jen's house.
All right, we're on the February 25th meeting. Minutes, do we have a motion to?
We have a motion, we had a second.
We all have a motion second, okay, those in favor? Oh, roll call vote, Will?
Aye.
Who seconded that, sorry, I didn't hear who seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Ben?
Aye.
Bruce, yes, aye. Jim?
Aye.
And Kevin?
Kevin, aye.
Okay, March 10th, 2020.
Make a motion to approve as presented with the same, same things that were on there before.
I'll second.
Miss Prince.
Okay, Will made the motion, Jen second, we'll do a roll call, Will?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Bruce, aye. Jim?
I wasn't present for that meeting.
Oh, you weren't, okay, Jim wasn't present, and Kevin?
Kevin, aye.
Okay.
And I have a, I sure said this, I just looked at this one too. It also has Andy Glines listed and I don't think he was at that meeting.
I was not at that meeting.
Okay, so.
Oh, I did, did I? Okay, that was my bad then.
And it might have been, because it also carried from the 25th, actually on the 25th, Andy Glines was not at that meeting. Generally, he doesn't come, he just sends in a report.
Okay, so then we'll take him out.
All right, so that, that will be corrected. Okay, so our next meeting date will be April 28th. And, motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
Will, can you help me bring stuff downstairs?
Jim, you're gonna enjoy that long ride home tonight, huh?
That's right.
All right, so we have motion to second, those in favor?
Aye.
Jen?
Yep, aye.
Bruce, aye. Jim?
Aye.
And Kevin?
Kevin, aye, so I could say God bless and we're done.
Okay, good night everyone, thank you.
Night.